Sir, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification, and adopt the agenda. If you all please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, did anybody? No one is registered to speak, so we'll skip number three and go on to four. Gifts and donations, student and staff spotlight, the Act Now Staff Training Grant.
So we have Crystal Stingle here, the AP at the middle school, to kind of give us some background on what this particular grant is all about. Braving the winter roads, too. Come in. Give us some detail.
Good evening, everybody. It's fun.
If it's green, it's on.
There we go. Okay. So, back in October, at the middle school, we were notified by a parent that there was a Children's Hospital anti-bullying grant through the Act Now piece that you could apply for. And so, we applied, and in November, we received the notification that we had received the grant. So, basically, the grant is $1,500, and it comes with an Act Now training school kit, which basically comes with a bunch of different things. And one of the big pieces of it is the student participation in it, but in addition, also the staff participation. So, if, I believe there's about a week-long staff training, but it's to be utilized through online resources, things like that. And I'll be meeting with the representative tomorrow to go through more details of what that includes. But then, the student pieces are really more hands-on. So, what are our students doing not only to actively engage in the anti-bul- or proactively engage, but also, what if you encounter a situation of bullying, what are your next steps? To date, what we've done so far with our students, and we're very much in the beginning stages, is we've done an introduction bullying article and discussion within our advisory classrooms. And then, all students took an online survey just about bullying at Whittman Middle School, what they've encountered, what they've experienced, or maybe they haven't seen much of it at all. I will be getting those results tomorrow upon meeting with that representative. I was supposed to meet with her today, but that was rescheduled. And then, probably one of the most powerful things that we've done to date was the anti-bullying panel, which took place on Monday, January 14th. And my student advisory panel, which is through our PBIS work at the middle school, basically facilitated three different stations, a bunch of different questions for students to go through. We had about 30 students express interest in being on the anti-bullying panel. And Ms. Paul and myself, Ms. Paul's very actively engaged in the PBIS work at the middle school. Ms. Paul and myself did not want to turn down students. So, we took all 30, and we just split them up, and then, our student advisory panel led the discussions. It was really neat to see how students took that ownership. We really, as adults, didn't have to do much at all. And different questions that were asked was, you know, what is bullying? At what point does conflict between students become bullying? What is an upstander? And how do you think students who are bullying field? But then, also, what are the steps that staff can take, parents can take, and students can take? So, those are the different projects we've done up to date. And our next steps are going to basically be putting some action steps into place. We're going to take our data from our online survey, in addition to our panel, and basically decide with our students and our staff what our next steps are. So, is there some type of plan that needs to be in the works? What might that look like? Is there a system that's going to be put into place? And then, in addition to that, obviously, that Act Now piece with the staff, that I'll get more information from the representative tomorrow. I just feel like I talked a lot. Any questions?
How receptive have the students been to this?
Really receptive. I'm actually really surprised in a really good way, that they just, they really want to get involved. Even after we had put that interest out there for the anti-bullying panel, I had quite a few students come up to myself, and Ms. Paul said the same. Are you going to do another one of these? When's the next one? When can we, can we get involved in this? Is there going to be another group? What are we going to do with this data, or the questions that we answered? So, really enthusiastic about it. I think, as a staff, we just need to keep that momentum going is going to be really important. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, move on to five consent agenda. A is approval of January vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of December 17, 2018, and January 14, 2019, school board minutes. C is approval of early graduation requests. D is approval of Act Now Staff Training Grant. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, sing non, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on to six action items. A is the food service truck. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and then, discussion?
So, yeah, the food service truck has been on our radar for quite a while, ever since I came on. It was, this could go any moment. And that moment was a couple weeks ago. And so, we've been getting by right now until Friday with the marching band truck, when that wouldn't start. So, this clearly is a need for us. We deliver, obviously, to our elementary schools and to the middle school, but also to our private schools. And so, the food service truck, we had put about $3,500 into it, I'd say, maybe five or six weeks ago, hoping that was kind of going to be the only thing. And then, two weeks ago, the back axle, I'm going to just say words, I don't really know. Broke, it's not starting anymore, so it's about four grand. The truck is not worth anything for trade-in. $500 for a donation that you would get for a vehicle. So, we are clearly looking for a new truck. The best thing about this is we use Fund 50 for this purchase. It's not a general operation, so it doesn't take anything away from anything operational. Food service funds can only be used on food service items. We have a strong fund balance there in which we can handle this request. The other piece, whether we want discussion or not, is we have been looking at the marching band truck. Again, it would not start on Friday. We sat down with the new band booster president, and then, Mike Zens as well, our high school band teacher, to kind of go through. We had an agreement about 18 months ago now, when we purchased the band truck from the band boosters. We talked over the potential to sell that as well, to offset some of the costs of purchasing this food service truck. The cost, the retail or the trade-in value of that is 3,500 per Holtz Motors. We talked about the different options that the band would still have, which would be to use our new truck. In the 18 months since we've signed that agreement with then-band booster president, it has not been driven. And so, the major concern by Todd, our buildings and grounds manager, is that it's sitting out there. It's a diesel engine. It's not being run. Repair costs run two to three times as much when it's on this particular band truck. It's a stick shift, it's difficult to find people to drive. Maybe Dr. Olson could, I could not.
You can't drive a stick?
No.
Man, that's just...
How old are you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How old is the vehicle?
2002. 2002 or 2001.
2002.
Yeah, 2002. So, the band booster president and Mike Zens were fine with us offsetting the costs, whether that wants to be a discussion here, and selling that at this point. There is a 16-foot closed trailer that we have at their disposal as well. They would ask the tech ed kids to maybe make something to put in the back of the new food service truck, a whole in-and-out piece as far as shelving goes for band instruments. So, regardless of that discussion, it doesn't have a lot to do with, we still need a food service truck, we're just looking for ways to offset some of the cost of a $45,000 vehicle. And the need for this is why this has been at one, this is, we brought it right as an action. The need is clearly evident, because Friday, we were freaking out.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of things, so it's a diesel. Was it, has it been plugged in?
I don't know.
Okay, so diesel's in the wintertime, going to have a real hard time starting them if they're not plugged in, so it doesn't necessarily mean anything's wrong with it.
Okay.
It just means that it's wintertime, and it's a diesel, and it wasn't being heated or anything like that.
Sure.
And last, we knew it was running, so...
Yeah, we've been using it until Friday.
Yeah. So, the, I don't know, I guess I'm a bit disappointed in that. It seems to me that, it doesn't sound like we need the $3,500 trade-in for the, to make this work. Because you said that Fund 150 or some...
Fund 50. Fund 50 is food service.
Fairly sound.
Correct.
You did mention that we would may be able to use that, the band boosters may be able to use that. Are there any restrictions that we know of, of using a food service Fund 50 purchased item for other purposes?
Yeah, we'd have to have some sort of rental fee that would go back towards Fund 50 to make it seem as a segregated amount. So, whether that would just be the district transferring dollars
Yeah.
into Fund 50 to cover the rental, whatever we would cause that rental to be, we'd want to put something in place like that.
Couldn't you use the $3,500 as payment as you go along?
It's tough, because the $3,500 goes into essentially fund balance. It's kind of lost in the shuffle of...
It's like if you, if you don't return a library book and you pay for it, it doesn't go to buy another book, it goes into general fund.
General fund.
So, there's not real support there, but anyway.
What we would do, what we talked about, is the band is looking for, if we're looking for the $3,500, what we would do, you're right, it would go into Fund 10. The $3,500 have to be recognized in Fund 10. The band is looking for uniforms. Their uniforms are about 15 years old. So, an option would be to use that money towards uniforms, uniforms run $400 to $500 a uni, and they need $100.
So, so, marching band is now in the curriculum, so it doesn't seem like you should have to sell off assets to support a class. But anyway, where would you store, do we have any idea where we would store an insert? You talked about maybe the tech ed folks building an insert, because right now, the marching band truck has a framework inside that was built
Yeah.
probably by the band boosters years ago
Yeah.
to safely store the drums and some other large instruments, so you don't rattle around in there and get damaged.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, and that framework is sizable.
Yeah.
So, do we know where we would store such framework?
I'd have to ask Todd where.
Yeah.
It was Todd's suggestion, and so, I'm imagining he has a place in which, whether it's one of the outshuts to put it. Yeah, I don't know the detail on that.
So, my thing is, 17 months ago, or whenever it was, when this was proposed, I suggested leasing it to the district so that the district wouldn't, and leasing it for a dollar, so that the district would have use of it as necessary, but in the clause of marching band, and I have it right up here, would have priority on the use of it.
Yeah.
I know that you said it hasn't been used in the last year and a half by the marching band. They didn't have a marching band last year. I'm not sure how they got to the parades without the truck on the Fourth of July. Normally, they do four parades. I think this last summer, they may have done two.
Yeah, buses.
They used a bus. So, you, oh yeah, and they loaded it up on the bus, which does make the, does make the, typically, it makes the band director nervous about rattling those drums and stuff around, trying to get them up into the emergency exit and sitting in a seat. But anyway, and I suppose this time, we had to use two buses. In the past, didn't we use one?
Why don't say we usually had two?
I thought we had one, because the marching band was not even 40 kids, right? And the...
Oh, you're right.
And the equipment all goes...
Who was the smaller band?
Equipment all went in the truck. So, I said 17 months ago that I was concerned that as soon as it became, you know, once it's district property, that they would, could potentially just see some other need for the value, cash value, whatever that truck, and it didn't even take 17 months to come to fruition. My personal opinion is that we should retain the asset to be used by this curricular, this curricular body in the district, which is the marching band. And it's already got the framework in it. There's nothing wrong with the truck, last I knew. And I think we should just not try to squeeze another $3,500 down on the price from a fund that can definitely handle it.
So, yeah, John?
This is my thing.
Yeah, and I'm okay either way. I mean, we sat down with Mike Zens and the new band booster president, and they were okay with it. And that's, that's why I bring it up. You know, what I'm doing is, I'm looking at the needs, the health of the district, right? I'm always going to come from the standpoint of the district. And so, if there's ways in which, whether it's $3,500 or $100,000, I'm looking for those options to give to the board. And so, you certainly don't have to take, we don't have to do anything with it. We can sit on it. My eventual question is, what sort of value do we want to continue to put into it?
Yeah.
And repair costs to run something that we, the district feels, and Mike Zens and the band booster president, that they feel they can use our new van for, and the trailer we have. So, at some point, there has to be a discussion of how much money do we sink into something that may not be needed.
How much does it need?
I don't, nothing right now.
Right.
You said it didn't start.
If the brakes, well, yeah, it could be any number of reasons.
It's diesel in wintertime and wasn't heated. That means doesn't start, that's all.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it started the whole week until Friday, so I don't know what happened Friday.
Okay. Well, I think it's a money pit. My opinion, to get rid of it, and it hasn't been used in how long, so the band director says, we don't need it, we don't need it, but we're just looking at a, like I say, a money pit, in my opinion. So, is this part of the motion?
It's not. It's a, it's not part of the motion itself, but I certainly don't want to get rid of an asset that, you know. The board acts on anything over $15,000, so it doesn't fall under that. It's just a discussion point, I guess, and it's certainly a large, it's still an asset that sits out in our, and if people would ask, where did it go? Well, we sold it, and we never brought it up at the board.
So, it doesn't need to come to us?
It doesn't.
Great. Well, then, I think we let the people we employ make the decisions.
Anybody else have any other?
So, to be clear, that's not part of this action. The action's simply the purchase of a food service truck. Yes.
Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries on to B, tuition waiver. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So, you didn't see this last time, but all this is, is saying tuition waiver students get preference in the open enrollment lottery.
It's a reoccurring item, that's why it's on here, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Tuition waiver students get priority?
Correct.
And how many are there?
There's 41 right now.
Will they all fall within the...
No.
Well, I got to finish the question, so people know what I'm asking.
Okay.
You may know what I'm asking, but...
Okay. Yeah.
So, will they all fall within the numbers of the open enrollment seats by grade that you're, is another item on the agenda?
No, they will not.
So, even if...
25 fall within, 16 would still be on the waiting list.
And if we don't approve the, the open seats, none of them get in? If we don't approve open enrollment seats, none of them get in?
The way it's currently written, correct. If you would have zero, you're asking if we had zero open enrollment seats?
I'm saying, the only reason to keep at least, at least all the 16 of these kids here, we have to approve the open enrollment numbers that follow.
Yeah, or the other option is, correct. The other option is what we've done in previous years, which is say, all tuition waiver students are accepted. We went away from that last year, because our residency has been rising, and so, it's very difficult to manage a system in which tuition waiver students who move out of the district are automatically open enrolled in when our residency is rising. So, it gives a little more control to that process.
Are the number of tuition waiver students more predictable than the resident population?
I'd say it's just as unpredictable. In fact, from now until May, there can be any number of tuition waiver students that jump onto the list. It's simply, if you move out of the district, you become a tuition waiver student. So, I don't know what the usual trend is, but it certainly is more as we, especially get into the spring, right? And people now have the opportunity to kind of look and sell their own home and do different things. So, it's just as unpredictable.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sing non-motion carries on to six C, new open enrollment seats. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion? Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say, normally, I'm against open enrollment seats, because they, we end up getting into classroom size issues, and it seems like we do it mostly for the money, although, a while back, it, some things did change about when you establish an average class size. If we, that there's some law now that requires us to, to have classes that are smaller than that, we have to open open enrollment seats up to that number, is that correct?
We have, we have to follow a formula. DPI says that the board needs to set in this formula capacity, an optimal capacity. And so, these numbers have kind of been in place for quite a while, and so, those numbers have carried over. And when we plug in the numbers based on optimal capacity, that's how many openings there are in each of these grades. So, for example, I might have to scroll down and look.
We don't have to take any open enrollment. The law, there's no law that says we have to take anybody.
Is that a DPI policy that we have to follow or something?
DPI formula, that you have to follow your formula.
Right.
And if there are...
Teacher-student ratio.
If there are...
No.
No, we set the class size, and then, the formula that Mike is talking about is, we got a class size, and say, an average of, we set the class size at 25. And if we, if our section size ends up being 22, and there's three sections, then that's public math, nine open enrollment seats, we have to, we have to
You don't have to take anybody.
open up to, in that grade level to, to comply with this DPI policy, is that correct, Mike?
You don't.
Parents would be able to...
Challenge.
Challenge.
RPO.
Right.
Parents would be able to challenge.
So, normally, I'm against more open enrollment seats. I've heard plenty of things from constituents about how class sizes, you know, are big enough and that kind of stuff. There's also research out there that was even presented at a board meeting a couple years ago, maybe longer, that some of our class sizes on our project, our optimal class sizes are actually above what the research says the class sizes should be. But in this case, because of the change in policy, that, I don't remember doing that, but in, because of the change of policy, in order to keep our tuition waiver students here, where they're used to coming to school here, and our ways and that kind of stuff, I'd be willing to support it.
Well, there's that, and there's class offerings that come into play as well. You might have one section that ends up having a lot of students. You might have another, like, our fourth grade right now, that has 20 seats. And when that rolls down, they get to high school, or middle school, or what have you, you don't have enough students to fill all the classes you want to have, you have to cut different course offerings, too. So, if we eliminate that, or choose not to allow any open enrollment, we run that risk.
Yeah, but what we've seen in the district numbers is the population increasing, is from what I understand. So, it's hard to say from a fourth grade, from fourth grade level, what's going to happen in, in five years to the district numbers. So, yeah, I understand the difference. I understand the course offerings can make a difference, but all I'm saying is, normally, I don't support this, but since it's tied to trying to get our tuition waiver students in, I'd be willing to support it.
Yeah, just to make an additional point as well, you know, if you're looking at the optimal capacities, and I wish I could, we're working within the optimal capacities, which if we accepted those open enrollment students, we'd have 2,473 students. And we take a look at our historical numbers, we're 2,502 this year, 2,520, 2,495 the year before. So, we're working within a pretty safe student capacity compared to what we have had the last four years. So, it's, I just want to, we're not pushing capacity where we're going 100 kids, and we're going to have 2,600 students here, and 30 to 35. Working within the optimal capacity, we would have 2,473, which we haven't had that low of a number since 14, 15, 24, 47, and then, they can jump up prior to that. So, I just want to make sure that, the intent here is not to push class sizes beyond the dollar amount, the revenue. Yes, it does bring in additional revenue. When you're looking at this situation, though, you're, you're losing open enrollment students out in the 12th grade, and you're almost replacing them, almost one-for-one, in this instance, back in. So, the tuition waiver students, for example, those 41, those were residents, right? Those weren't our resident count. So, now, we take them out of our resident count, and so, there's a loss of revenue. Then, you've got your 12th grade open enrollment students, right now, they're coming out, and that's a loss of revenue, where I wouldn't really call bringing open enrollment students back in a major revenue source. All in all, the whole big picture of how many, yes, there's revenue there, but it's not additional dollars that are going into our system next year, because we're taking these open enrollment students, does that make sense?
Sounds like it's minimizing a bit of a loss.
It's minimizing more than anything, yeah.
Yeah, Typle, grade eight, eighth CE, stuck up in the bottom.
Yeah, something new they're trying.
Yeah, that should be WMS. Thank you.
I just want to clarify something from the last board meeting, too. There was a talk, our fourth grade class at Edgerton, which the board was aware, we added a class reduction teacher this year. And if you saw on the data that we have 85 students, I think there was some mention or something about 100 students. We were at 85 students, and so, at that point, we added a class reduction. So, our class size at fourth grade is at like 21 right now. So, we're right at that bubble point, so that's still below our optimal class size. And I think, as we reported, only one student in that whole building in fourth grade is open enrollment. So, those are resident, right? But then, if you look at our third grade class, right behind it, we have class sizes of 19, right? So, 19 and 28, like that, and those are resident students. So, we try to mitigate, so now, we've added that class reduction teacher. So, really, part of it is balancing to create some consistencies, because as you can imagine, trying to balance, you know, what you offer, and all of this stuff, and scheduling, and all of that stuff is challenging. So, I just wanted to clarify in terms of that.
It's interesting that our larger class sizes really isn't an open enrollment
Correct.
problem, which is, which is interesting, that that fourth grade is all residents. And that's just kind of, again, that balance. So, we're not adding open enrollment students into any grades that clearly are at capacity. They're the grades that are lower, such as, you know, you take a look at the current eighth grade, and take a look at the current third grade, those are a bulk of where open enrollment is happening. The third grade going to be fourth grade next year is 20 of your seats. Your eighth grade going to be ninth grade, there's another 14 of your seats. It's not because those grades are at capacity, it's because they are clearly low grades, and without those additional students, you're looking at some alternative, yeah, yeah.
How's our capacity for the current 11th grade going to be 12th grade?
So...
I don't see them on there, so are we a little bit over, or right at?
Yeah, the current 11th grade...
Well, that would be 12th grade next year.
Next year's 12th grade.
Right.
Need to add five.
Yeah, we're adding five, and that's going to be only the tuition waiver students who are 11th graders. They're the five that are going to get the preference to be, continue on into 12th grade. So, there's no other open enrollment.
That was a low spot when these guys at Hales Corners Elementary, anyway, were over there, as they went through Hales Corners Elementary, that class of 2020, they actually took a teacher, it took, removed a section from that grade, because there was a low spot in that population that flowed on through. It's interesting that we, they did do, the board did open enrollment stuff as time went on, to try to bring up those class sizes, and now, you're talking about add another five, so, yeah, it's interesting, that's still a little bit of a low spot.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, non-motion carries. Onto D, Whitney High School Course Proposal, Social Studies and Computer Science. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, non-motion carries. Onto E, Superintendent Contract. And this motion is to extend the contract to include the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, and again, we're doing this because otherwise it would roll over, but, um, obviously we are fortunate to have Dr. Olson here and we want to keep her here. So we're extending it the extra, the extra year. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, non-motion carries. Thank you. Onto seven reports. Uh, A is twenty eighteen, nineteen district goals, forty-five day plans.
So, uh, we started this this year of making, from an accountability standpoint, is reporting to the board every forty-five days. So if you remember back in November, we reported the, um, first forty-five day cycle of our, um, district goals. And so we've completed now the second forty-five day cycle and it's shared before. And, uh, there, they are on our website. They're, um, and the documents get updated. So we're just going to report out, uh, pretty globally on the district goals, what we've accomplished in the last forty-five days, the work that's there. Maybe a little preview when, um, when it makes sense about some of those goals, what we look like. Kathy, can you bring up the goals of the actual, by the link on there? Um, and so each director or myself, I will take six and eight, um, has a, a goal that they are, um, more, uh, they oversee. And so they're going to take that and sort of share with you some of the work and keep it at that level. So I think, Lynn, do you have the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Goal number one is the development and implementation of our district-wide learner profiles. So this year we undertook, um, a piece of personalizing learning, um, with the direction of the Personalized Learning Institute and a team of teachers. Um, tried to figure out what we could leverage at the district level. A lot of times when you have personalized learning, people have pockets of things that are happening at various levels, various buildings. So the learner profile was our overarching. We're going to try this K-12. So every student right now has their own individual learner profile. Um, so cycle two, as we are working with those learner, learner profiles. Um, we started off with everybody having access to those learner profiles and providing time for students to work on those, um, providing the why of those are important as far as students understanding themselves as learners. And in the second cycle, we were working with, um, principals to just follow up with staff that hadn't been really working with the learner profiles and students on, um, a regular sustained basis yet. So then we, we went through, we looked for completion status and kind of went around to teachers and had conversations about where they were with the learner profiles with the students. And we had a wide range. We had some people that had really had some meaningful discussion with students and students had some very rich and robust information. And we had other students that had little to nothing in the learner profile for a variety of reasons. Um, sometimes schedules didn't allow timing, students being absent. But we spent the second cycle drilling down and figuring out, you know, what information do we have, not have, and following up to get those things, um, completed. We have reviewed the timeline for checkpoints and progress. So we just, uh, running into right now our mid-year checkpoint. So principals again are sitting with teachers and teams and saying, where are we? What is very complete? Um, we now want students to finish the bulk of the information that's in the learner profile. We're also collecting information from teachers, um, saying, you know, this is what, what students are finding valuable. This is what they like. This is what they don't like. This is what's something we'd like to see added for next year. And so we have just said, we're going to commit to this platform for this year and then we'll make some revisions based on student input as well as teacher input, um, for next year. The, then we have an end of the year checkpoint that is, that is yet to come a bit further down the line. Um, the one area where we are still falling short is teachers engaging with the learner profiles in an ongoing manner. So when we say we have these checkpoints, let's go in and look and have the discussions, that's working fine. But we don't yet have a, a habit or a routine set of, this is what's guiding instructional practices and this is what's guiding some student choices. Guiding how we might differentiate some of our instruction for students. So it's not routine yet. So that's going to take some additional time of just really getting this to be a, a habit and a practice for those teachers.
Goal number two, um, really is around focusing on the, the development of a plan for our social emotional learning. Um, we, in our first cycle, we selected a curriculum, um, for students to use. And so during this cycle, we've started to engage in that. Um, classrooms are using the curriculum a minimum of one time per week at the elementary level. Uh, middle school is doing it during their advisory two times per week. Um, in high school, we had a goal for inclusion of our freshmen and, and that's a piece that we are still working on. Um, in that development, we are taking not only that curriculum, but we're pulling things in that we've been using in the district. So we've done an inventory to, um, find out what, um, activities teachers have currently been using as well as taking our occupational therapists who, um, have some expertise in the regulation. And so we've done zones of regulation in our district for many years. So we're tying that in and replacing some of the lessons that are in Lions Quest so that we're not introducing two different things that we're just sticking with something that's been in place at the elementary level for a number of years. Um, in addition to that, we recognize that, um, we need to have teachers who have a strong understanding of their own, um, emotional state. So we are looking at a floating PD option that will take place in February. We have a presenter who is here with us in August who will be doing some self-care, um, that evening. And it'll include them taking a survey to identify what are some of their stressors. And then at the end of it, actually creating a plan for their own wellbeing and managing that, um, that they can take forward. And then we'll have a checkpoint. So that's, um, the last piece is the development of a micro credential. We are in progress of multiple that, um, will be added to our handbook this spring, but we did not complete any yet. So that one is the one that we're still working on.
Is that by staff and staff and administration or who's developing?
Um, it includes staffs. I'm using my pupil service team for some of those. And then we also are using the expertise of the person who's going to be coming on the nineteenth, um, to help with one of them.
Um, goal three is our literacy goal. Based on data that we looked at through the bulk of last year, we recognize the need to really figure out, um, what is happening with our reading and writing performance across all grade levels really. And so we established a goal this year of by the end of this year, developing a multi-year literacy plan. And just really understand, getting teachers to understand what does it mean to be specifically teaching literacy? What does it mean if you're outside of a specific literacy content area? What does literacy mean when it's embedded within your content? So if I'm a tech ed teacher, what does literacy mean within my content area? Um, so cycle one was really about heightened awareness and really developing some common expectations on our literacy instruction, explicit literacy instruction in all levels. Um, our K-five teachers have always been very well-versed in teaching reading and writing and the, the tenants therein. It gets a little fuzzier as we get older and the students have built up some skills. And sometimes, um, teachers at the higher levels are no longer really drilling into specifics of where does the student fall short in reading? Is it a fluency thing? Is it a comprehension thing? So we really wanted to start getting that awareness, really K-12, um, very solid and solidly implemented there. So cycle two was really an ongoing professional development for particularly our six, twelve teachers in best instructional practices and literacy practices. And we've sent them to some workshops and brought in some professionals, some expertise people for them to really work with. Second semester is going to have us hooking them with some area teacher teams that have already been through this practice. So they can go and see other classrooms in action, uh, particularly at the high school level when they are dealing with literacy-specific stuff. Um, we are doing floating PD, floating professional developments and coaching cycles and professional development sessions around the, around data and look, having teachers look at the data and understanding what they're looking at when they're looking at literacy data. Um, and the one area here where we are falling short is that we had thought that by cycle two is where we would really start talking about interdisciplinary literacy and what it means. And as we went through the year, first semester, we really found that, um, a lot of teachers wanted more time to work with their own content standards. We really weren't as grounded in their own content standards as we would have liked at that point. So after some discussion there, we said, yep, let's just keep focusing on, many of them have new content standards that were just issued by the state. So we want to get that familiarity in place before we really start layering in the literacy components and what that means for those, those other content areas. So we're going to push that into the next cycle.
Can you scroll up to cycle one, please? I just wanted to see what the red was. The next one. Thanks. So for the, um, literacy applications, you mentioned how, adding it to the Teaching Learning Handbook. Is that still going to be in place before next school year, having it in the handbook?
Yeah, it's in, the, the literacy look-for documents are in the handbook now. What we've not put in there yet is the interdisciplinary graphics of, you know, what does it mean if I'm a science teacher? What's my role in literacy? And we always think about literacy as I'm teaching reading and that's where teachers like, whoa, I'm not teaching, whoa. But when we say literacy at that point, what we're saying is you, and as a science teacher, you expect communication skills. You expect research skills. You expect, you know, to be able to speak things or write things or, you know, the communication piece of, that's all literacy. So really heightening the awareness around what is literacy in those content areas as used that way is what we're going for there.
Okay, thank you.
Goal four is, uh, deals with our ten-year facility plan. Our major headwinds now for, uh, Todd and I is, is really the referendum. When we started this process, it was everything that's going to be in the referendum. We're going to get all of that in there into this nice little sixteen point one six million dollar box. And we will move forward with, with projects. As we move along, as we take projects and things out of the referendum to meet budget, it keeps that a constant shift about what needs to roll up to the front of the, of the ten-year plan or what needs to, to, to be taken off completely. So Todd and I are still working on really what is that immediate one to three-year range? And then more, less importantly, but still on there, the four to ten year range. So we have our, our documents, um, mapped out. We have, um, you know, projects that were on the previous tenure crossed out and ready to, to put into a nice, nicer box. But we're kind of waiting, like I said, for the final bid packages to be completed, to know what those projects are that can or cannot be met.
So we can, if we have money over, left over, we can use it to chip away their ten-year items?
You could, as long as they fit the language of the referendum. Um, however, and, and where we're looking right now, we're, we're pulling back on projects versus, hey, we can do some other things. We're, we're not at that point yet. And so that's what's making ten-year list, the one to three list, uh, difficult to pinpoint right now until that process is done.
When you say pulling back on things, pulling back on items that were part of the referendum?
Details within it, yes. It's not, so for example, instead of saying the, the renovation for HCE, the addition. We're going to have the addition. It's all the little things though of, of what happens with that addition. Could, maybe we have to pull dollars out of the roofing portion of our referendum, for example, to cover different choices made within the sixteen point one six million. That would mean that a roofing section might have to be first and foremost on our ten-year facility plan. So as we make these trade-offs within the referendum, what rises to the top of our ten-year facility plan to handle first? Does that make sense?
It does. Uh, and will we, will we be updated to anything that's pulled?
A- absolutely. So, so part of that discussion is happening, for example, um, tomorrow. We're bringing C.D. Schmidt in to look at big packages, three, four, and five to bring to the board. Currently, it's been things such as aesthetic looks that have been taken out. But at some point, could it be, well, the roofing scope was supposed to be seven hundred, it's only going to be five hundred now? We would let you know when we update you on that process.
That's to, to make up for the, the estimated cost of things like concrete and then where the, where the, uh, bids actually came in, much higher, right?
Yes. So we have, you know, that, that room, that's, that's just part of the trade-offs that we had. We had the goal of X amount for roofing. All right, it may have to come back and sculpt or, or wait and see until the very end. Do we have some contingency money left over or whatever the, however it all shakes out at the end? Yeah. But yes, it's to compensate for the, the estimates that were given.
Can I see the stuff from cycle one, please? Because that red mark there is the same as the one on cycle two.
Correct.
It's just a work in progress, is all it is.
It's all it is, is a work in progress.
Appreciate it.
So hopefully, when the referendum is, is done, that, that new list then is going to prevent us from falling into incredibly deferred maintenance issues?
That's really what it is going to come down to.
It's going to keep us better focused and on top of what needs to be taken care of before it gets to be detrimental.
Essentially, that's what you're going to have is a, is a, is a deferred maintenance list. Correct. It's still, no matter where we are, still by, uh, when we report on this again in April, I'll still bring forward a funding strategy. We put innovative in there. We'll see. Um, but, uh, we'll come forward with some sort of, uh, strategy to at least say, hey, here's how we can handle years one through three, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two.
These ten years aren't, oh, too far.
Yes.
So is part of it then to maybe look at an eight-year list or a five-year list and not have a ten-year plan any longer?
You, you need to have a ten-year plan for your Fund Forty-Six being opened. So that's part of the requirements to at least show there's some attempt to look forward to ten years. Um, most of the time, what you can do is towards those back end of the years, you can put on there a cycle of, hey, here's the, the life of a roof or here's the life of an HVAC and just kind of plot it on there so you can kind of see what's coming up. Whether it actually happens that year or not, it's a living document that you can adj- the board adjusts as time goes by.
So we're using a, like a one-year, three-year, ten-year kind of deal?
That's how I kind of look at it.
Yeah. I mean, it makes sense. You got to have an idea of what's on the horizon as well as what's in the near future and what's right now. So. And it's, of course, they're living documents. They got to change.
Correct. Goal five is all about our, uh, hiring processes that are, that we are revamping. Our human resources manager, Karen Gonzalez, has done a fantastic job of sticking with our, our cycles and ensuring that, uh, we are doing things, um, the way, the, to, to fit into our culture of what we're looking for in our, in our hiring process. So we are on, on pace to be able to roll out a new hiring process by, uh, the end of March in which we mapped, have everything kind of mapped out, have some, um, standard across, uh, employee groups as far as what we would expect. Questioning, um, some different, uh, tests we've looked into. For example, for our support staff, if we would bring on a certain position, what are we testing for to ensure that they aren't just saying, my knowledge is? There is some testing that occurs. Uh, happens naturally with educators who can get into the classroom and give a, a, a short mini lesson. So we're kind of trying to bring that over to our support staff hires. Uh, we brought together our entire business office, which was kind of a cool activity for our whole business office to be a part of. Here's our current, um, process for hiring. What can everybody kind of see as maybe something different? We start to shift things around and see what things are possible in the hiring process. Are, are we using our efficiencies the most? We brought that process back to, um, our leadership team, uh, to ask questions and discuss and, and bring about different, um, strategies to, to be able to just hire better and have a clean process where expectations are the same across all four buildings. So we're right on, on pace with, um, our, our plan. And it's on to cycle three, which is to eventually roll this plan out sometime in February, get feedback and then, um, practice it.
Okay, goal six.
That's mine. So I have six and eight. So it was reversed. Um, not as much on six for the first cycle and a lot on eight. And you'll see the opposite this time. So goal six has to do with two-way communication. So we were doing a lot of observation in cycle one to really look at all of our, um, modes of communication that we had and trying to see what were the gaps. Um, it became pretty clear in cycle two and we really monitored very closely the places that had two-way communication. Um, so it's hard to do two-way communication with things like the Whit and a window or something like that. So really focusing on social media and e- and email in which there are two-way communication. Trying to really look at the level of questions that are being asked. What information do stakeholders think that they're not getting that they're having to follow up on always? And so really took an in-depth look at that. And so, um, the, the, the steps that you see there is that we continue to, um, monitor that, um, in terms of that. And we held a two-way, um, communication focus group on January twenty-first. And, um, sort of the results from that, uh, short term were to, um, off from our Whitnall School District Facebook page, have a group that's associated with it because it was relatively easy to set up. There are a lot of features in there. So you, um, Logan currently is, um, for everybody that asks to be a member of the group, is validating that they are truly a parent at Whitnall. So they have to be asked that. It's not anybody, uh, it's public right now in terms of people being able to see that. But it's also, um, in terms of to be a member, to post something, you actually have to be a Whitnall parent. So we did that immediately. Um, it seems like there's been getting, um, some good feedback from that, the type, the levels of questions that are there. Um, we can organize by topic. There's a lot of things that we're even finding. We can organize by topic. There's a lot of things that we're even finding out within it. So, that was a short-term effect. I would say within thirty-six hours, we had it up and running from the meeting. Actually, it was probably twenty-four hours from the meeting, had it up and running and had members. And I think we're at about three hundred and fifteen parents that are on there already. So, in less than a week, we have three hundred and fifteen parents that have joined that group and are watching that progress and just monitoring how, so it gives us an insight in terms of how we do topics and all of that. We also took a lot of feedback. The people who were there that evening collected some ideas, some thoughts about what they would be. We're looking at maybe some more robust solutions. I would say the top things that on there were having some FAQs, some specific groups or places where you could go into chat rooms, if you would, for people who have specific interests. So, we'll try to look at that. The conversation between private or public is really sort of like, what does that look like? Pros and cons to that. So, we'll continue to look at those feedback that we receive from that group, monitor this and see, and then ask the group probably in a month or so after it's been out. Simultaneously, we do have a two-way stake communication survey out to parents right now. And we have, as of right before I came in here, a hundred and ninety-two responses from that. Lots of comments, lots of people were appreciative of the group that we created last Tuesday in order to be able to do that. And so, getting a lot of feedback on what they would want in a two-way communication venue. And a lot of them, there's mixed on, you know, if some people wanted to be public or private. But I would say across the board, most of the feedback that I'm reading right now is they definitely have to be a parent. They want to make sure that the guidelines are followed, there are protocols that the school district can monitor to make sure that information is accurate. I think that's one of the concerns is that when people ask a question, they're getting accurate information or responses from that in terms of like, when is this? Or when is this due date? If sometimes it, you know, people who are asking each other and may not know, and other people are watching that, they may actually have the wrong date. And so, when the district can do, when can we actually say, hey, this is the actual information and here's the facts that you need to know? So, that's in terms of that. We also, last Monday, we had a staff development day. And so, part of this goal is also looking at internal stakeholders, but realized that the external stakeholders sort of became a priority quickly based on some feedback that we were watching. And so, the other part, there's a little miniature slide there, if you will. If you're familiar with Plan Do Study Act cycles, this is a sort of an expansion on that. So, we have some of these that we created for staff, our internal stakeholders. In terms of, a lot of times they'll say like, so you started this grading thing, where are we? Or, one of the latest things that we've taken on are internal subbing because we know that we have a shortage on that. And so, sometimes there's a lot of planning going on in the district, but not everybody knows like, where are you with that? Right? So, we've created these cycles of where are we in terms of that? So, this one, I just grabbed one that you can see. This one is pretty close to the end of it. This is the compensation model because we are in that revise, revisit, and sometimes the cycle just keeps on going. And I think the message to our internal stakeholders was, is that you're never really done. So, you put some goals, you implement it, you come back and revise it, you get feedback, and then you continually do that cycle. And so, the educator compensation model, because it was recent, sort of was letting Mike shared like where we are in that process and how that will continue, we'll implement it. We've been going on for a year and a half now. What have we learned from it? We're getting feedback, we're going to make some modifications. And that's really the cycle of everything they do. So, we identified that we have a shortage of subs. So, we planned for that. We met with the principals and talked about how we might do that, how do we look at that? So, we sort of shared these cycles of implementation with a lot of the things and have these wheels available on our staff, internal site for our staff to seek. They are not all, they are not our district goals, for example, so they're not for the public. Sometimes there's stuff we're working on internally that staff might want to know, hey, we were asked about this, or there was this committee working on this, where are we in this process? Before it becomes a thing. So, right now, we have five of these out there and we're going to now ask our staff if there's something they're wondering about that hasn't been reported on that we can give them that communication. Like, hey, I know we were looking at this, is, did we just drop that idea or where is that? So, that's the second piece that we're going to start to elaborate on. I'm looking forward to cycle three, trying to meet with our staff and then students to create some similar types of communication for them. I think we wanted to get the external stakeholder piece of it, whether it's a Facebook group or whatever it is, how might that also work for either staff on a more private type of venue where there could be questions that are posted out there? Lynn and Jackie, a lot of, we use a lot of FAQs if staff have questions on a Google form, but how might we look at that a little bit more publicly? So, I think we're learning from that group, how we might use that with both students and staff to be able to look at two-way communication.
What did we miss from cycle one?
It was the focus group. Yep. And so, we were able to, and we had hoped to do that in cycle one. We realized, oh, we got to sit back and just observe a little bit more before we poke people together.
You have seven?
I have seven. Goal number seven really revolves around our academic and career planning. And this work is mainly done by our counselors, K-12. They have been attending a session through CISA. So, we went to the second session during this cycle. It's really a nice opportunity to network with other districts who are along the same journey, but maybe in different places. We saw some really great examples of exit interviews that other districts are not yet executing, but they're planning for, which brought us back to doing a lot of brainstorming as to how we make connections between the learner profiles that Lynn is working on and connecting that to what is the profile of a Whitnall graduate and also looking at what do we want to do in terms of looking at an exit interview from high school? So, we spent a lot of time looking at that, sharing information between the various groups. The big thing on our list of accomplishments was really selecting the grades in which we will execute an activity. So, the goal asked for us to do two grades. We'll actually exceed that by quite a few as we're going to do something grades nine through eleven at the end of the school year on the last two days. And we'll be bringing forward that plan at one of the February meetings. We have sort of a rough draft of where we want to be and we just want to be able to solidify some of that before we bring it forward to you guys again. But we also have an activity that we'll be doing with our eighth graders that will be related to career exploration. So, we'll probably end up with four grades executing something at the end of the school year, which will be exciting. We have one item that we have in red, which was our inventory of volunteering and service projects. We sent out a survey to all staff and asked them to give us an idea of what they're currently doing in their classrooms. We've done that. We just feel that it's not complete. We know based on the counselors being at each building that we need to go do some tapping on the shoulder and ask people to complete that survey, that there's stuff being done at grade levels and that it's not on the list. So, we've done it, we're just not happy with where we're at.
Did you hear that Dave Cody had a, we had asked for that?
Yeah, and that one was, really had to do with partnerships, not so much just activities. So, like, for example, at Hills Corners Elementary, every grade has a service project that they're engaged in at some point during the year. We know that every grade right now isn't represented on our list and we know that we're incomplete. And then, at the secondary level, I think there are things being done by clubs that they're not necessarily always including on the list. They took it to be classroom, you know, like Spanish does the project every year and that's not included on there. So, we know we just need to go back to some people and ask them to record that because as we start to develop ideas, you know, if things are there and they're good, we don't necessarily need to come up with, reinvent the wheel on that.
Can't you publish what you have and then revise it as you get more data?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
And I may have missed it, but what do you mean, execute activity during the school year?
In the, the very top is the actual goal. And so, it asks us to identify two grade levels that we will have a partner, community partnership with and actually execute an event. So, for example, the eighth grade, we're looking at a career aspiration day. We're kind of in the beginning of stages, we have a meeting tomorrow. But that will, that will be an event for eighth graders. So, we'll be asking for volunteers from different workplaces to come in. What we'd like to do is put those into career clusters and do some work with the kids in advance so that we can identify their interests and then match them up accordingly so that they go and see speakers who match up to the cluster that they have shown interest in and then do some additional work with them afterwards to have them reflect on. Here's what I went to and interested in. Now I learn more information. Is that still a field that I continue to be interested in?
So, what are the thoughts for, sorry, I was just looking at the side.
For the high school?
So, you're talking about two grades, which you said you're probably going to do something for ninth, tenth, and eleventh, which will exceed the goal of two grades. Do you have any idea what those?
We do have ideas, but we, because they involve community and have, we need, there's lots of moving pieces. So, we want to save most.
How is that going to impact either the curriculum, our homework levels, or whatever? Or when are these kids going to be involved in this stuff?
We're looking at things for the last two days of school.
Okay.
So, exams will be done.
All right. Thanks.
Goal eight relates to our prospectus. So, a lot to report last cycle because that was the unveiling and the video and all of that stuff. And so, no green this cycle. Our freshman academy students had taken on a project and we were looking at what potentially ideas they might have. And based on just the way that that project had come out in terms of those ideas, I know that they've met with high school administration on some of those ideas. We were hoping to have them come to the board. So, they're still vetting through what some of those ideas might be to see if how many of those we could implement. So, in terms of soliciting feedback from stakeholders for defining our core values, Jackie just mentioned something called the profile of a Whitnall graduate. And that is sort of what we've decided that we need to do in terms of that outcome piece. We are missing that piece. We had talked about that dashboard in terms of the career-ready, the college-ready, and the life skills. And in order to define what those things are, we are missing this big piece of, what is the profile of a Whitnall graduate? And so, we did hold, and I guess I could put this on here as I try to be pretty pure on what I'm doing, but the alumni focus group or the parent focus groups that we held was trying to get at these, what are these things that define a Whitnall graduate that are really making sure that we're successful? So, we know what research says, but how are we doing and what are our own graduates saying? So, need to work on that a little bit more. But there is, at the, it's on the agenda coming up, but at the school board convention, you know, there was, there was a couple of presentations actually on this profile of a graduate, a lot of areas around here. One of the CISA's is putting on this workshop of how do you get that data to decide what it is? And I would really like to make sure that we know what the national data says is, but I would really like to make sure that it's really local in terms of what we're finding out that we do. So, you can put those words out there like collaboration and communication. I don't think anybody would disagree with you. But I think that it's a matter of like, so how do we make sure that? It's very easy to measure a test score, right? And assume that that makes someone college-ready. We're finding, and as I've heard from our alumni, that that is like, it got you in, but it's not with keeping you in and making you successful. And I don't know, there's some research recently from Professor Adam Grant that came out that really talks about that, what it looks like in college. So, we have a lot more work to do about what this looks like. So, I feel like the values piece of it needs to align with our profile. So, we have our three values of what they are. But how do we, what does advancement, courage, and belonging look like in terms of the profile of a Whitnall graduate? Because I don't want those two to be isolated, so they're just like separate things. So, that's why I have it in red, because I don't feel like we really moved a lot on it. We've had a lot of thinking and planning and like, hold that and that needs to happen there. But we didn't move forward and maybe just pause it is okay too. We did have a recent conversation, we're still working it, we're in the middle of it, is, and I liked this piece of it in terms of the perspective, is that I am hearing teachers at staff meeting refer to the word prospectus, but it was brought as we're looking at some recognition for staff. You know, do we have an educator of the year, an employee of the year? Or how do we acknowledge employees? We had, and it was a newer staff member who came and said, well, why not use the prospectus as the background for that? Like, someone who demonstrates those values or who demonstrates that purpose. And it was a, I was like, it was like, yes. Like, so it lets me know that they're thinking about what that is and I know that our principals are using it at their staff meetings as I'm attending it. It's becoming part of who we are. It's got to stay out there and talked about. So, in terms of that, it's internalizing it and realizing that it wasn't just something to put on a shelf. And so, if that's what we're trying to value, if we want to recognize any staff member that's being innovative or encouraging, some, trying some of those new things, then we have to recognize those things in terms of it. So, I think we're still internalizing it because there was the you rah rah, here it is and all the hype. And now, it's like, what does that actually mean to how we do business? What does that mean to our culture? So, I think that's why in terms of cycle two, it's sitting back. But there have been some conversations or pausing us to think, you're right. We need to embed this into everything that we do and start to recognize for that if that's who we are. So, and you'll hear people say it, I don't want it to just become a tagline. I want it to become like, what does that actually mean? So, work to do without a doubt in cycle three around of how does this become more visible instead of just a tagline?
Great. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you for all the time and effort and look forward to the next forty-five day report.
Thank you.
On to B, referendum construction update.
As I alluded to earlier, tomorrow, we are meeting with C.G. Schmidt and Bray at the table to take a look at big packages three, four, and five, which you're going to see all of it together on February eleventh, February eleven. And that pretty much cleans up, that'll clean up all the packages and all the things that we need from C.G. Schmidt's side of things. Again, as a reminder, we have four projects outside the scope of C.G. Schmidt. That's the pool liner. We have a quote on that. We have roofing, as we talked about earlier, and kind of where that's going to fall in. We'll be asking for approval of some bids for that as well. The boilers, and there's one more, trying to blink. So, we're bringing all those pieces together pretty quickly here. And tomorrow will be interesting as we see how this all fits together within our budget. So, there'll be some things that we're looking forward to possibly take out and modify in different ways. Anything you want to add to anything?
Yeah, we've been putting the weekly updates from the construction. They're always a week delayed, but that's how it is if you've been watching the highway construction. So, you can see some pictures on there of the actual work. They were working today. I don't know if they're working Wednesday though, Nancy. They were working today though, so. And I want to get ahold of the video. So, Lori, they've been doing the ask, ask a question. And so, Lori and the construction site manager did a little video answer and had the student ask the question there. So, I want to try to get ahold of the video so we can put that out there for the public to be able to see. So, students, parents, anybody at the Hills Corners Elementary are able to submit questions to ask. And so, want to be able to put that out there so you can see how that's being done. So, it's fun. There's a lot of excitement around that in terms of that, so.
Flooding, that's the other one.
Okay, I was wondering.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. On to C, SWSA report legislative update?
Yes. Sorry about that. I will get to legislative part of it in the WSA convention report. So, we had a lot of things to talk about, mostly legislative with the new governor, which is the ex-DPI superintendent. But the thing that we decided and we started is that on even months after the meeting from nine to nine-thirty, school board members only are going to meet and discuss topics, pre-planned topics. And I think it's really good, really good. Actually, I think I told Lisa, I wanted to talk to one gentleman from Sherwood about something that went on in Sherwood and I actually got to talk to him at the convention. But there's a wealth of knowledge here for all of us to share. And I think the first meeting this February fifth is going to be on communicating, how does your board connect with your community? What are you doing to engage the community? So, these are all really relevant, interesting topics that we will discuss after. So, that was a big part for me anyways at this past meeting. The next meeting is Tuesday, February fifth. That's what I got.
Okay. Next is the WASB convention. So, a couple of board members did attend and Lisa attended as well. So, I don't know if you want to share any?
Do you want to continue with what you said?
Sure. So, I went to several, actually, I was there every day. And so, I went to one on security on Wednesday. And I had a bunch of questions and I'm very happy that Lisa was there. And we are either doing these things or in the process of doing them. So, it was... And we are either doing these things or in the process of doing them. So, uh, it was, there was about five or six different things. And so I was, I was really glad that, um, that we are doing that. Steve and I went to a speaker on Wednesday morning, Thursday morning. This gal, this dancing gal, um, during a place, took a step back and fell straight down the trap door and paralyzed herself. And what she's done and doing with her life now is just, it's spectacular. Very, very powerful. And then, uh, Friday, I started a day out with the, um, the Blue Ribbon Commission, which was a, a commission of state senators, state assemblymen, women, um, superintendents, uh, person from WSAB, um, this gentleman from CISA.
Ted Nitski.
Nitski.
Nitski, yep. Former superintendent at West Bend.
Yeah. He's hilarious. Uh, so, uh, and I actually went to the, so they went around the state finding out what, what's wrong with funding, basically what we can approve and, uh, what the, the, um, administer, what the, uh, legislation can approve in or approve for schools. And I actually went to one that was here in Milwaukee. It was over at one of the MPS schools. And they, they sit up there and, uh, WW, or SWSA had three people that went up there and talked about, uh, different funding disadvantages. And, uh, so they, they come out with this report. And, uh, the interesting, and, and everybody was emailed that report. And the interesting thing is, so the gent, the two gentlemen that, uh, were, uh, the, uh, the chairs of this are, uh, are two Republican, one's a, one's a Republican, uh, Senator and Republican Assemblyman. And, uh, they both are ex-school board members. I think Joel Kitchens is really relatively new from being a school board member, right? And Luther, uh, Luther Olson has been, uh, Senate for twenty years, but he was also a school board member twenty years. The reason why I say Republican is because as may, you may know, the Assembly and the Senate is controlled by, by, by Republicans. And they've come up with about eight or nine different, maybe even more, um, recommendations. And for the most part, they have to do with, with money. And, uh, the governor has a, a proposed probably a one point four billion dollars in, uh, extra funding for schools. And while they said right there that that's not gonna happen, uh, but they, they really do believe that'd be a fair, a fair amount of money that they can come together on. And there's several of them. They said the one, uh, is a done deal. The two-thirds funding? It's not, that's what he said. Says done deal.
What is it?
Well, it's in your report. Your graduate report is in there. Here you have it. Um, and the other three, they said that they would really think, they really thought that they, you laughed at, that's what the man said.
That's good.
We're not doubting the legislator that it's a done deal.
They could, they could come together on were the pupil, per pupil adjustment and per pupil aid, uh, decline in enrollment. And there's one more. And special education. So, uh, I think this is the perfect time for us to get our feet wet, feet wet. And, uh, that's the other reason why I asked Kathy or I asked Lisa to, uh, get our representatives. This is a perfect time prior to, uh, the budget process to come up with a letter encouraging our representatives to not only look at this, but to move it forward. And with, with two Republicans in a Republican-controlled, uh, Congress, Congress, but legislature, we should, we, and they're all on board for this. So we should hopefully get a fair amount of this done. Luther Olson, Senator Luther Olson is the chair of the, uh, Senate Education Committee. So, uh, I, Lisa, do you think it'd be, I think it's better if it comes from the school board members and you sign on, right?
Yeah, I would say that that would be true. And, and if it's funding, I would say putting your director of business services on there too would, in terms of that, like it depends upon, I'm just saying, yeah, it does. You know, depend, if it was a special ed thing, you know, depending upon where it is. But I, yeah, I guess that, I, I would say so they're looking at, yep.
So with the approval of everybody here, I would come up with a letter that would, we can, it's just a starting base so we can add and subtract and get it to our, uh, representatives prior to the, uh, uh, start of the budget cycle, uh, which is gonna happen pretty soon. Well, we got till March. You said you'd have it in March and they said you'd have it in February. So, um, we have a little bit of time, but we, we'd wanna get it in their hands and, uh, they're moving us forward. So what do you think?
I, I think you clearly wanna pick out which ones, obviously that, that are, that speak to you the most. And that, and there might be some pros and cons. Not everything has, not everything is simply pros for Whitnall School District. So you wanna be able to talk about some of those things before signing any resolution. Cause some of those things, while it might help the state, if we're strictly speaking for Whitnall, there are gonna be some things that help and some things that have cons to them.
Yeah, I, I, by all means. And I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over them again. And, uh, anybody can come and, uh, formulate this letter. And, uh, I think now is the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would agree, I would say would be one of those things, and I think, I don't know if John or whoever, last time we talked about this, like you could say we would support two-thirds funding. The question is like, what is, what is the trade-off? Like, we wanna make sure that we, we don't go out and say we support two-thirds funding. And then they, in order to make that, because we're at about thirty percent right now, so that's, that's a big gap. Where are they gonna get this other thirty-six percent, right? If they go and slash some other funding that we rely on, right? So you almost have to put some, we do this as long as it doesn't come from, you know, whatever, whatever it is. So I think it's just, it needs to be crafted in a way that we don't like one hundred fully support that because there might be some caveats we need to clarify in terms of that. So, yep.
So I will come, I will send you email to promote some dates if people wanna come. By all means, let's put together and, and then, uh, maybe bring it back to the next meeting.
Yep. February eleventh would be, yep.
And then get it to our representatives.
Good.
That's all I got.
Anybody else wanna share any highlights or?
Yeah. Um, so I attended the delegate assembly. There was some actually very in-depth discussion on like sometimes where we kinda go in circles over some small words. But the biggest thing that was discussed that took a while before it was amended and passed was about school safety. Um, they had a resolution about different things regarding school safety. And one of the points to it, which is the hot button piece of, um, or topic that people debated, was about legislation. I'm just gonna read it word for word. Legislation allowing prosecutors to bring felony charges against any individual who intentionally conveys a threat or false information concerning an attempt to use a dangerous weapon, including a firearm, to injure or kill a person on school property or transportation provided by a school or at the event sanctioned by a school. So the big thing with that was the idea is if someone makes a threat, even if it's, they just talk to someone and send a text message to their friend that says, hey, I was thinking about doing this, that the legislation would allow the prosecutor to, or whoever it is, to immediately bring upon a felony charge on the individual. The big debate over it was, is a felony charge over a kid who is disgruntled and texts a friend, is that what we want? Do we wanna destroy, uh, ten, thirteen, fourteen, whatever year old's life with a felony charge of something that could have been in acting out in anger? Um, it ended up being amended and passing with the legislation saying, or with it saying instead of to bring a felony charge, to bring appropriate charges. The biggest proponent for felony charge was Waluoto's School District, since they had an incident early last year where exactly that happened. A student was texting a friend and made comments of, well, if I was gonna shoot up the school, I would do this, 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 and this, and this. And then their friends realized, okay, this is a problem. We should bring them in. And the student pretty much was forthright and said, well, if I was gonna do it. And he told the school resource officer, I'd shoot you first and then I'd go about and do this, that, and the other thing. The issue though is with that incident, he never did anything. It was determined, okay, well, we're pretty confident he's not gonna do anything. He got expelled, left the school. But as far as charges ever brought up, it was merely a misdemeanor charge. He was held less than twenty-four hours, cause he was put into a mental facility, but your parents can check you out, and was back on the streets, if you will, within twenty-four hours. And that became very concerning for what was going on with the school. Um, and I think that, that falls into one of those gray areas of, okay, how, what can you really do about this? But, um, a lot of discussion too is about, we're not the ones that are supposed to be telling people what charges to bring upon students. It's, the main point of the resolution is making sure you're increasing communication between yourselves and law enforcement, which is in place here and I know is in place there. Um, but it was, it was definitely something to think about, especially given that circumstance. Um, but it did end up passing with the amended language instead of felony, bring appropriate charges against the individual. Um, other than that, most of the things went through pretty straightforward. There were some, few questions about wording. And a lot of this stuff, there's a number of things that were really duplicated in what's already out there. Um, another thing that passed, but was a lot closer, was a resolution about higher learning. So as far as teachers that teach dual credit courses, um, college level courses and high school courses, and they get the dual credit, um, it passed one fifty-three to one twenty. So it did go through as far as the resolution to try and lessen the restrictions as far as teaching those dual credit courses. Cause as of right now, per WASB, um, some of those, uh, the Higher Learning Commission, which issues the accreditation to the colleges, universities and such, requires individuals that are teaching dual credits to have an advanced degree or at least eighteen credits beyond the bachelor's degree in a specific subject they're teaching. So there was a lot of debate as far as, well, should we really be lessening what the teacher knows to teach a class just so that we can get that in there? Um, but the resolution did pass. Um, other than everything went through pretty, pretty easily.
Great.
So is it, do we know if it is a felony now or is it a misdemeanor?
It, it's the, what is a felony now is if you make a bomb threat, that is a felony charge right away. But if you speak or threaten as far as using a weapon, depending on the situation, it's treated as a misdemeanor cause you didn't do anything. You didn't technically say, you didn't technically alert someone that this is what you're going to do or make the threat. You just discussed making the threat. And that's the, the caveat with that specifically Waluoto. But they were trying to distinguish between actually calling it a bomb threat and saying, I'm gonna blow up the school and the emergency people that come and all that other stuff as opposed to just talking about it.
So I'm just curious on that, on that case that drove so much of this discussion, um, was this just a mental exercise by this student? Because, because, and the reason I ask that is because there are, there are college courses where, and, and I have personal knowledge of this, there are college courses where they say, how would you do this? And your, your project is to?
Well, and I, and I think that was the issue specifically to that when I was reading into it and while the discussion was going on, looking at more of the details of someone leave the details unless it was in the paper. Um, but it seemed to be just that of, well, I thought about doing it. I'm not going to do it. But if I was gonna do it, yeah, this is the steps that I would have taken to do exactly this, that, and the other thing. And that's pretty much how frank it sounded that the student was talking to the school resource officer with it.
So he was just talking about, if I were to do something, this is what I'd do. It was just a mental exercise for the kid?
Without knowing for sure, it seemed that way, yes.
Okay. Interesting. He gets expelled. But there's college classes that have you create projects to, you know, this is what I would do for a terrorist. So.
Fortunately, we haven't had to deal with that issue, so.
Yes.
Um, anything else, Kevin? Uh, no, that was, uh, was about it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Get a lot of gadgets, Kevin?
I did get a lot of gadgets. That's you on the.
Shameful, Ben, dude?
I got a lot of pens. I got a lot, uh, stress balls, cause obviously you can't have enough of those.
Okay, great. Okay, then we'll move on to the, uh, school board PTO and liaison reports. So we can kinda, Nancy, anything on Park and Rec?
Yeah. So, um, I don't know if you guys know much about the Park and Rec Department at all at Greenfield. We know we got an opportunity to honor our director earlier. But the Park and Rec, um, department in Greenfield, there's only five, about five people, five full-time employees. They rely on a lot of part-time people, especially in the summer. So they do everything that's related to the parks as well as all the recreation activities and things like that. So, um, one of the things that they did, um, a couple of years ago was they, um, they partnered with the Greenfield School District to do the Kids Connect Program, which is the before and after school program. So that's been really successful. The numbers have increased over the years. Um, so they, they have a lot of kids now in this program. Um, I think, do we still use the Y? I'm not sure what we do, but.
During the school year.
At, yeah, Edgerton, we do.
And?
And HCD during the year.
Before and after school.
I don't know if that's something that we would wanna look into with, um, working with Greenfield or not. But, um, anyway, so they do that. And then, uh, we did get a chance to meet our new, um, what I would call buildings and grounds person, although we don't have so many buildings. We always have some buildings, I guess. So, um, so we did hire a new person for that. Her first name is Kent. I don't recall his last name. Um, but, um, so he just started, so he's new. Um, I know that they're working, trying to rearrange the classes because of our pool. Um, so I know that Todd's been working with them and keeping them up to date with as far as dates and things like that. So that's about it.
Quinn?
Uh, February fourteenth is our next meeting and we will have the candidate meet and greet at, starting at seven AM. Valentine's Day, what a way to celebrate.
Can I say one more thing I forgot? So I probably forgot the, the biggest thing. Uh, so Friday night is their, uh, recognition banquet. You should have all gotten a, uh, invitation for that. Um, unfortunately, I have other plans on Friday night, so I won't be at the banquet. So I don't know if you've, uh, anyone has, um, responded or if anyone is going to that. But it's usually, you know, very nice. And as you can see, they have a whole list of people that they recognize. And every year is someone different, so.
Great.
So the middle school is as active as it's always been. Um, that they've been doing a lot of the eat and earns and they've had some successful fundraisers. So they're building their, their bank account so that they can give back. They recently were able to purchase some canvases for the arts department to get canvases, canvases in its decorations so that they're contributing that way. Uh, but one of their biggest needs right now is finding other parent volunteers to help. So there's some members that are officers that have eighth graders that are going to be moving on and they need parents to step up and to be part of the board for PTO and also just to volunteer and take over some of that. Uh, one of the things though is that some of those are daytime activities and it's hard to find someone who can commit time during the day to do things, um, that, that can't always be done in the evening just because you're contacting business people or you're trying to prep something for the evening, that you need to be there at three o'clock in the afternoon. Um, so if anybody is interested, that's an incoming sixth grader and also a current middle school parent, if they would seriously consider helping out the PTO or becoming one of the board members, they would be happy to talk to you and have board member elections for their next school year. Um, they've also are considering going to every other month for meetings too, which may make that easier. But that's something that had, had been discussed occasionally. So, but getting involved and having some more parents to support would be very helpful as they're growing and continuing to offer services and they like to sustain also.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, Hills Corners, we just met, was that last week? I can't recall if, but they meet every other month. We get their first candidate meet and greet, uh, for the upcoming elections. So we have four of our five candidates there. Each one talked for roughly five minutes. Do the same thing, I believe, at the EES PTO meeting, um, coming up soon. Um, fundraising's going great as usual. And, uh, I know they, the main discussion was just about the next fundraiser with raffle baskets, which, um, each class puts together their own. It was all coordinated. I believe they're also looking for board members because, you know, they're trying to cycle through people. So if you're interested and you're a parent in HCE, just contact them and they'd be happy to tell you what all goes into it. Meet every other month. It's a lot of behind the scenes work, but definitely, uh, definitely worth it.
Thank you. Stephen?
Uh, Whitnall Falcon Booster meets again on Tuesday. It's gonna be their meet and greet for board candidates. Um, at their last meeting, talked about their Falcon Fest this spring. They're doing a casino night and they, um, other thing that's going on is, um, I guess hiccups with concessions, trying to make it work well for groups coming through. We've had a couple outside groups, like there's a wheelchair basketball group that wants to use it and other things. So most of what they do is they've got ways set up so that students can make money, depending if a group's running it versus the students just working it. So they're trying to do, trying to kinda iron out, iron out some of the details. So, they're trying to do, trying to kind of iron out some of the details so that outside groups can make better use of it. One of the other things that they've been talking about is what I'm calling the Tyler Hero Effect, you know, when you don't sell out all your basketball games, you don't sell as much concession, so the revenues are down. We're down a football game this year, we're down attendance on basketball games, so they don't have as much money as they have had in previous years. So, part of that is, is there something they can do better? So, they're really making a big push for the Falcon Fest coming up. And then other group, band boosters, finally switching to officers, yay! So, we have a new group there. Some of their big focuses are reaching down into the middle school and trying to connect that, make it almost like a district-wide thing, but at least kind of start in the middle school where kids are now more involved in the music program, and talk about expanding from band to include like orchestra and chorus, and kind of work with those people to see if this would be something that would have a benefit for the program as a whole.
Great, thank you. Do they not have enough inside groups showing interest to running concession stands that they're having to...
Oh, no, they do, but it's just the sales, it's the customers on the other side.
Oh, you're talking about having outside groups staff the...
No, the people in the stands to buy the food.
Okay, I thought you were saying considering outside groups to staff, but as a fundraiser.
No, there's, like, the wheelchair basketball is a Whittenell thing, but they'll use our...
Oh, I see.
They're using the concessions.
So, in other words, open up our concession stand to some outside group activities?
Yes, like Whittenell youth sports, things like that.
Yep. Lisa?
I just want a couple events from both the chamber boards that I serve on. The Hales Corner Chamber Board has their annual meeting coming up in March, if you are interested, any board member can attend that, so they have no February social in terms of that. There is some potential of doing, the Highway to Hales, that we did this last year, was very successful, they are thinking, they're trying to find a location to do it, possibly farther north, to try to find a location, and so we did, our band participated, and so did our cheer team. So, looking at when that is also. Then the Greenfield Chamber Board, switch hats there. In January, we did the first Lunch and Learn, in which our high school principal sort of helped organize some of the, to do a panel of employers of what they're looking for from today's youth, and so that was pretty successful. We are currently in conjunction with Greenfield School District, we are organizing a job fair. We're looking, right now, we have to meet with the chamber president again to finalize it, either the week before spring break or that first week after. So, it would be available to our high school students, to adults in the community, college students, we'd probably hold it, so we're looking for a location. But we're doing that in conjunction with the chambers, so people can come and either have a booth, and also adding some volunteer opportunities, so for our high school students who are looking for that. So, a volunteer and job fair, but we'd also open it up to the community. So, those are a couple of the activities that we're directly involved in, from a school district with both of our local chambers.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then on to F referendum monthly financials.
In January, we got our six point one six million dollar portion of this, so you'll see the balance jump up next month. Just want to assure the board, I do have a more robust spread, internal spreadsheet than this, and we're tracking all expenditures of all projects against that in coordination with C.G. Schmidt, so, I mean, yep, C.G. Schmidt.
Great, any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to eight items for future consideration. Okay, on to nine board member announcements.
Battle of the Birds, here Friday, five forty-five. Battle of the Birds, it's Greenfield, Whittenell, basketball, girls and boys varsity, same night, I believe, boys go first at five forty-five, and then girls will follow.
Great. Any other announcements?
February eighth, week from this Friday, forty-eight PM, is a fundraiser at Noodles for one of the Whittenell students. They're trying to raise money to help him get a service dog, and they still need to raise ten thousand dollars. I think it's twenty-five percent of the proceeds from forty-eight PM at Noodles at Hales Corners, twenty-five percent of proceeds will be donated towards that goal, and again, that's a week from Friday, forty-eight PM.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you to all the families and alumni and volunteers that came back for the Zelinski Tournament. It was a huge success and a lot of fun, and to thank Todd and the custodial staff. And they do a fantastic job, they're always smiling, always gracious, and they work extremely hard, so just thank you to all of them for all the work they do across the district on a daily basis. Anybody else?
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen, Board eight five one C, to discuss superintendent goals.
So, move.
Second?
Aye.
Roll call vote, Nancy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, have a great evening.